The House will come to order. Members, please take their seats. Sergeant Arms.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled to privileges of the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by Pastor Randy Mathis, Senior Pastor of the Point Community Church, West Point, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America laid by the delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
It's a privilege being here today, and thank you all. You're my heroes. Before we pray, I'm going to ask that you try to remove everything from your mind, all agendas, all your things you've been concentrating on. Let's just concentrate on the Creator, shall we? Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, in your word it states, "God is love," and we honor that today. The greatest commandment says, "You shall love your God with all of your heart, your mind, your soul, and your strength, and you shall love your neighbor as yourself." We come against the schemes of the enemy to divide and conquer, to instill hatred and disunity. Lead us to come against longstanding traditions of isolation, separation, and segregation, those things that divide and cause suspicion. President Lincoln's words, "A house divided cannot stand," echo in these chambers. Our flag, the symbol of our nation, is made of the colors red, white, and blue. Without all three, we are not complete, as remember the phrase, "United we stand, but divided we fall." Enable us to make unity, forgiving, and loving priorities, O Lord, so we can stand strong with our neighbors, whether black or white, or red or blue. Enable us to love our enemies and pray for those who persecute us. Remind us, Lord, that even our opponents are loved by you the same. Everyone was created by you, in your image and for your glory. Thus every person we see deserves to be treated with dignity and respect as image bearers of you. Our prayer today is, "More of you, O God, and less of me, so when people look at us, all they see is the image of our Maker." We have fallen short, O Lord, in many ways, and we need you to get us back on the right path of love and unity. So we relish in the victories that will come our way. As your love pours out of our lives and into the streets, love conquers all; love never fails. The greatest of these is love. We love you, Lord. Thank you for loving us first. In the matchless, awesome, and loving name of Jesus Christ we do pray today, and all God's people said, "Amen."
(Inhales) "Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board. Clerk will close the roll.
Mr. Speaker, a quorum is present.
The clerk will report a communication from the Governor.
Communication proclamation from His Excellency, the Governor, in accordance with the provisions of Article 4, Section 6, and Article 5, Section 5 of the Constitution of Virginia, and the powers thereby vested in the Governor to call a special session of the General Assembly. Ralph Northam has hereby summoned the members of the Senate and the House constituting the General Assembly of Virginia to meet here in Richmond for the purpose of redrawing districts for the Virginia House of Delegates, given under the hand on the 20th day of August, 2018. Ralph S. Northam, Governor of Virginia.
The delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert, will please advise the Senate that the House of Delegates is organized and ready to proceed with business. House will be deezed.
He was at the funeral, so the wonder--
Did you get to see him?
Oh, no, I didn't get to the funeral.
Oh, you didn't get--
House will come to order. motions and resolutions under Rule 39 pursuant to the provisions of Rule 40 are now in order. The clerk shall announce the first morning hour of business, including any clerk's announcements and communications.
Mr. Speaker, I have no announcements at this time.
Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect the following members or way on pressing personal business and are granted leave from today's session: Delegate Byron, Delegate Jones of Suffolk, Delegate Keem, and Delegate Peace. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege and motion.
Delegate is the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in 1998, a 21-year-old student at the University of Wyoming in Laramie, Wyoming, was beaten and tortured. He was tied to a wooden fence and left for dead. This treatment due solely to his sexual orientation. His name, as you know, was Matthew Shepard. Matthew died as a result of his injuries on October 12, 1998, in a Colorado hospital surrounded by his family, who loved him deeply, and many friends. While inexplicable hate, as we saw a year ago in Charlottesville, remains in our culture, progress has been made over these last 20 years. Matthew Shepard's family stepped up, pushed aside their pain and grief, and started the Matthew Shepard Foundation. There, they worked toward a future when people who are LGBT won't have to fear for their lives. The Matthew Shepard Foundation provides a voice to and support for LGBT youth. The Foundation's online resource center is called Matthew's Place, and I encourage you to check it out. The Foundation helped pioneer the first, the country's first, federal hate crimes law with the passage of the Matthew Shepard and James Byrd Jr. Hate Crimes Prevention Act. Maybe as important, it started a continuing dialogue about hate and acceptance within communities across our nation with special support for The Laramie Project, the acclaimed play by Moiseus Kaufman and members of The Tectonic Theater Project. This year, on the 20th anniversary of Matthew Shepard's death, dozens of theaters across the United States will be staging performances of The Laramie Project, including here in the Commonwealth by Listen Up, The Richmond Triangle Players opening September 26 and playing through October 20, in Roanoke by Off the Rails Theater for four shows on September 28 and 29, and at the Renaissance Theater in Lynchburg on September 21 through October 6 for eight dates. The Matthew Shepard Foundation's longstanding mission is to help erase hate by replacing it with understanding, compassion, and acceptance. Through local, regional, and national outreach, it has empowered individuals to find their voice, to create change, and to challenge communities to identify and then address the hate that often lives within our schools, neighborhoods, and homes. The Foundation's work is an extension of Matt Shepard's passion to foster a more caring and just world. They do so by sharing his story and embracing his vigor for changing the hearts and minds of others to accept each person as they are. Matthew's parents, Judy and Dennis Shepard, have been tireless and unrelenting in their work to build a more civil and tolerant society free from hate and bigotry. Led by Judy and Dennis, the Foundation and citizens across our nation, including many here in Virginia, continue to engage in activities that raise awareness of hate crimes in our society. So it is my hope, Mr. Speaker, and the hope of the Shepherds, that one day the Foundation may be able to close its doors. Unfortunately, the same hate and violence toward LGBT people that sparked the Foundation's formation still exists, both at home and abroad. I hope that all of us here today, Mr. Speaker, and members of this historic body, will double down on our work for equality, for justice, to ensure the safety of all people, and embrace each other until hate is no more. With that, Mr. Speaker, I move that when we adjourn today, we do so in honor of Matthew Wayne Shepard. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate Sickles moves that when the House adjourned today, adjourn in the honor and memory of Matthew Wayne Shepard. Those in favor of the motion shall rise. That motion's agreed, too. The clerk will report a resolution.
House Joint Resolution 7001, limiting legislation to be considered by the 2018 Special Session Two of the General Assembly and establishing a schedule for the conduct of business coming before such special session. of business coming before such special session. The resolution has been distributed, is available online, and, Mr. Speaker, there is a floor amendment to HJ 7001 offered by Delegate Simon.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, the House Joint Resolution that you have before you is nothing new in terms of what it does to organize this body and the body down the hall. It provides for the purpose of our special session, the rules, other things that we might do while we are here, such as election of judges and so forth, and appointments to, which are subject to confirmation. There is an additional transparency paragraph that you see before you that I think is consistent with the way that both sides of the aisle would choose to handle these matters in a very public, transparent way, and so I offer the resolution for the consideration of the body.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Mr. Speaker, members of the House, the amendment is in I-HOD, and it's fairly self-explanatory.
Delegate would like to speak to his floor amendment.
Speaking to the floor amendment?
Right. Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I've introduced a floor amendment. It's in I-HOD. It goes at the very end of the resolution, and it talks about when we come back. And so typically, what we've said is that we come back at the call of the Speaker and the Chairman of the Senate Rules Committee with 48 hours' notice. What this amendment does is it says, "But in no event later than September 12, 2018, on the part of the House of Delegates." The idea there being that we've introduced a bill, we're here to redistrict and to correct a map. We've introduced a bill. It's been referred to the Privileges and Elections Committee. Beyond that, we don't really have a schedule for the conduct of business the way we do during a regular session, where committees have a deadline to act, and we have a crossover deadline to get things to the Senate, they have to act, and so forth. So all this does, it doesn't try to put too much of a fine point on it. It says that we've got to be back here. We hope the committee will be done with its work by the time we get back on September 12, so we have time to do our constitutional readings, treat this like any other bill, get it to the Senate so they can act, give the governor, if he needs, time to act, because we're operating under a deadline. This isn't a do it when we can. The Court has ordered us to complete this process by October 30. So the point of the amendment is to hope that we get back here in time to keep this process moving along so that we can meet the Court's deadline. That would be the pleasure of the House to pass the amendment.
Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Mr. Speaker, speaking to the amendment.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I would ask the members of the body to reject the proposed floor amendment. We have every intention of coming back expeditiously to try to deal with the issues before us. It's just that the time proposed certainly, you know, the time that the Governor gave us to even begin to plan this endeavor was certainly very short notice. The additional short notice certainly impacts a number of members, probably from both sides of the aisle, and their ability to return to take up this matter in a thoughtful manner. And so we have, I would publicly commit to coming back within three weeks from now, or at least by that Friday in the third week from now, to try to take up these matters, which I think would be the 21st of September, Mr. Speaker. But we are certainly not trying to delay these proceedings. In fact, I think we're very eager to get to some of the issues that are presently before us and try to take them up in a very thorough manner, a very thoughtful manner, and very quickly, for that matter. I don't think three weeks is too much to ask for. So we are publicly committing to trying to come back here. I say trying because, again, we can't guarantee that on such short notice, everybody will be here. But I think the Speaker, myself, our leadership, are ready to commit to coming back here by the 21st of September to take these up and, or take this up, and whatever else may be before us at that time. And so I would just ask the members of the body to reject the amendment.
Delegate from Charlottesville, Delegate Escana.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, speaking in favor of the amendment.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, appreciate the comments of the gentleman from Shenandoah and his willingness to specify that he'd come back. We'd come back in three weeks. There is a reason why we want an accelerated period of time, Mr. Speaker, and the reason, I think, should be apparent to everyone who has followed this situation for a while. The court, the district court, on June 26 issued an order that said we had drawn unconstitutional districts, and we had to fix the problem. That was June 26. Since that time, it really has been delay, delay, delay. If, and I'm sure that people are aware that shortly after June 26, I wrote a letter to the Speaker requesting that we convene as quickly as we could to try to draw new maps to fix unconstitutional lines. Nothing came of that. Shortly thereafter, the court then wrote to the House Republicans and said, "Please tell us what you intend to do. Do you intend essentially to introduce a map that people can debate and decide on that will fix the unconstitutional districts?" At that point, I wrote another letter saying, "It's time for us to get together. We need to fix this problem." Again, nothing happened. It was only at that time that the Governor stepped in and said, "You legislators don't seem to be able to get your act together to have a special session. I'm going to call one, because you've got to fix a constitutional problem, and you have to address a court order." Now, we are here today, and we are hearing again, delay, delay, delay. And I can understand the argument to delay, if you want to get some more public input on this. But let me also give you some perspective on what happened the last time we faced this challenge. Let me take you back all the way to 2011. Now, not everybody was here, so you probably don't know what happened at that time. At that time, we had to do a redistricting, and we didn't get it done during the general session. So we called a special session. That special session had the introduction of a bill on March 29. March 29. There were three public hearings and four other public hearings that occurred two days, within two days of the introduction of that bill. And on April 4, which is less than a week after the bill was introduced, the PNE Committee voted that bill out of committee, hit the floor, and it then was passed by the House of Delegates. So don't say that we need all that much more time, and we were dealing with a map that involved the entire state, not just 11 districts. Now, we can either delay, 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 or we can fix the problem. The reason for our amendment is that it holds our feet to the fire, and it gives us much more time than we gave ourselves 10 years ago, eight years ago, to fix this problem. I hope we will vote for the amendment, vote green on the amendment, and let's keep a date certain where we will come back and try to get a vote on something to resolve a constitutional problem. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, a message from the Senate.
Senator Oren Jane. Mr. Speaker, I've been directed by the President of the Senate to inform the House of Delegates that the Senate has unanimously agreed to its own Senate procedural resolution, Senate Joint Resolution Number 7001.
Thank you, Senator Oren Jane. Floor amendment. I thought you've already reported it. Okay. Clerk, report the floor amendment.
Floor amendment offered by Delegate Simon on line 23, after the word "rules," insert comma, "but in no event later than September 12, 2018, on the part of the House of Delegates." This is a floor amendment offered by Delegate Sullivan to House Joint Resolution 7001. Simon, excuse me, Delegate Simon.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry at this point.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, everybody's a little rusty. I believe the question, if I am correct, is on the issue of the floor amendment at this point, proposed by the gentleman from Arlington, Delegate Simon. Is that not correct?
The delegate is correct, and after we wrap up discussion, we'll have a vote on the floor amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Shall the floor amendment be agreed to? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. The floor amendment is rejected. The ayes and nays are called for. Shall the floor amendment be agreed to? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 48. Noes, 48.
Ayes, 48. Noes, 48. The floor amendment is rejected. The delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would again move the adoption of the resolution.
Mr. Speaker. Delegate from Charlottesville, Delegate Escana.
I'm sorry, the speak button's not working, but speaking to the resolution.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, as you can see by the last vote, it is possible to prevent the passage of the procedural resolution. But on our side, we believe it's very important. We have a responsibility to govern. We're not going to create a problem by rejecting this procedural resolution. We believe we need to get to the work of redrawing these districts as quickly as we can. I'm urging all my colleagues on the Democratic side to vote a very strong green on the procedural resolution.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 96. Noes, 0.
Ayes, 96. Noes, 0. The resolution is agreed to. The delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert, will communicate the action of the House of Delegates to the Senate and request its concurrence. House will be at ease. Clerk will report a resolution.
House Resolution, House Resolution Number 701, the traditional salaries contingent and incidental expenses per diem payment during special session two, patron by Delegate Gilbert.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, this is the resolution that I believe the Chairman of Appropriations would typically put forward, covering expenses per diems and the like during the special legislative session. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 93. Noes, 0.
Ayes, 93. Noes, 0. The resolution is agreed to.
Many of our colleagues on both sides of the aisle, including a good many, who joined us in the wave of 2017, promised their voters the same straightforward agenda. Voters all across this Commonwealth in our nation oppose the time-dishonored tradition of gerrymandering districts, which allows politicians to pick their constituents and not the other way around. While this problem is nearly as old as our nation itself, citizens from across the political spectrum are now more than ever fed up with this corrupt political culture. Mr. Speaker, we have at this moment the real and fleeting opportunity to lead our Commonwealth out of this gutter and to make a powerful and historic statement that our Commonwealth and our citizens, as we approach our 400th anniversary as a legislature, we have the opportunity to carve out a legacy which will stand as a shining testimony to the power of what good men and women on both sides of the aisle can do when they put this Commonwealth ahead of petty partisan politics. We have the opportunity to act collectively and without more partisan rancor to demonstrate to this nation, to this Commonwealth, and to each citizen that we serve by our actions and not by mere more empty words what we actually mean by "the Virginia Way." Mr. Speaker, the proposed redistricting map we've seen so far today goes well beyond anything that the federal court has directed us to do. It's self-serving political power grab. It's gerrymandering in response to gerrymandering. It's tit-for-tat. It's, in the immortal words of the baseball great Yogi Berra, it is déjà vu all over again. But let's be honest, Mr. Speaker. Turning around and doing to your side exactly what the Republicans did to us in 2011 doesn't make this Commonwealth any better. It doesn't settle any scores. In fact, it merely creates new ones. The time has come to finally bury this dinosaur of political corruption we all know as gerrymandering. I'm not the only member of this House who was elected in part because I took a strong position in favor of independent, nonpartisan redistricting reform. There are many on my side who feel as I do and are ready to stand for this principle over politics. And I know, Mr. Speaker, there are solid leaders on your side who will as well. Today, let us join together, regardless of the cynical political voices that try to persuade us to do. Let us join together and put our Commonwealth and the future of its citizens above our own petty political ambitions. Let us join together and finally, finally, make the monumental and patriotic act of looking gerrymandering squarely in the eye, calling it out for what it truly is, and establishing genuine redistricting reform and drawing districts that actually serve the Commonwealths of the citizens of Virginia. And I thank you, Mr. Speaker.
If anybody wants to, we're about to get to the conclusion this morning hour. So if anyone wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Charlottesville, Delegate DeScano.
I have the honor this morning to stand before you to try to celebrate the time in this General Assembly of the Honorable Member from Salem, Greg Abib. I know that I worked very closely with the governor to pick this particular day for the special session rather than tomorrow or the next day because he wouldn't be here otherwise. And we wanted to have an opportunity to talk a little bit about Delegate Habib.
No, we don't.
No, we don't? No, yes, we do. I'm sure there'll be many other people who will celebrate his successes here in this chamber. You know, I -- he came after me, but I think I spent maybe more time in committee meetings with Delegate Habib than maybe anyone else. I was on courts with him. I was on Civil Law Subcommittee with him, Transportation with him, Transportation Sub with him, Commerce and Labor with him, Rules with him. Way too much time with him. Let me tell you, during that time, I really have enjoyed his intellect and skills. And those are two things that, you know, we're going to miss him for leaving us. You know, sometimes people are critical of lawyers, but the really good ones, like Delegate Habib, they look at the language of a bill. They look beneath the language of the bill. They look around the language of the bill. They look at the unintended consequences of the bill. Now, sometimes that appears to be a little obnoxious. But not Greg Abib. He's one of the best of this and not being obnoxious. With a possible exception of those snarky little tweets he sends across the room occasionally during floor sessions. I mean, seriously, though, I began to see Delegate Habib as a sort of a fixer. Not a Michael Cohen fashion-type fixer, but a fixer of bills. Both Democratic and Republican, by the way. Sure, he did have this little occasional partisan side which we all enjoyed and smiled at. But when he put down that partisanship and let the full range of his mind work, it was a thing to behold. And we will have a hard time replacing that in this chamber. So in conclusion, I want to thank the gentleman from Salem for gracing us with his presence for all these years and wish him the best of luck in whatever future endeavors he may attempt. Thank you.
Sergeant Arms.
Mr. Speaker, a message from the Senate.
Senator from Harrisonburg, Senator O'Conne.
It's been a long time, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I've been directed by the President of the Senate to inform the House delegates that the Senate has agreed to House Joint Resolution Number 7001.
Thank you, Senator O'Conne. Delegate from Charlottesville, Delegate DeScano.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, yesterday, the Democratic Caucus put in a bill to try to fix the unconstitutional boundaries that had been drawn in 2011 by this chamber. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, I can say to you today, we take our obligation to govern very seriously, as we showed a few minutes ago by passing that procedural resolution. And we also take court orders very seriously. People may say, "Well, you know, we have an appeal pending. We have asked for a stay," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But anybody who knows anything about the law understands that until a court acts and either grants an appeal or grants a stay, you are required to comply with the terms of an order of the court. Now, that's what we have tried to do. We understand where the court says something is unconstitutional, we have an obligation as legislators to try to address that problem. We have known that these districts were unconstitutional for a long, long time. The court affirmed our view of that on June 26 of this year. June 26, how many months ago was that? We haven't had -- we've had an opportunity to get back together and try to fix the problem since June 26. And frankly, we're not the origin of the problem. And we are not the majority party. So in a way, we're not in a position to fix that problem without your help. So what we have been doing over the last few months is writing letters trying to get a commitment to come back here to do our work as required under the Constitution. At least two letters asking for us to get back together. No response. Even the court has asked what the majority party is going to do. They most recently asked for the majority party to provide information before August 24 about when and if the majority party was going to produce a map. The response was the classic non-response, i.e., "We're not sure what we're going to do. All we can tell you is the governor has called a special session, and that's about it." Well, Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, there have been four elections for the House of Delegates since this unconstitutional map was drawn. Four. We want to make sure there's not a fifth. We want to make sure we fix that map. So Delegate Bagby has introduced that map, and I think it has a broad base of support within this caucus. We believe that it is constitutional in that it does not take race into effect as the predominant reason by which these maps are drawn. That's what the court said in its June 26 ruling that you can't use race as the predominant reason. Now, Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, there are a couple of other things about this map that I think people would find interesting. First of all, the map assumes the plus or minus deviation in population that this chamber also assumed when it drew its map in 2011. So at least we tried to build on what was used last time. Now, some of us are not quite sure we agree with the plus or minus 1% deviation, but we set it aside and said, "Okay, we want to build a map at least on basis of some assumptions that were agreed on." Secondly, people are always concerned about split precincts. The old House map, the one where the 11 districts were considered unconstitutional, had 115 split precincts. In the affected districts, there were 41 split precincts. In those 11 affected districts now, there are only 14 split precincts. So we try to address that issue as well. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, there are a lot of people who have worked very hard on this map. It's not a perfect map. There are no perfect maps. But it's a map. And that's something that has not been produced by the majority party since June 26. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, I hope that we can act quickly on this map. If you have amendments to it, fine. If you don't like it, that's your prerogative, too. You can vote against it. There have been some people on this side of the aisle who say that map is unconstitutional, that our map is unconstitutional. I say that again because that's an important point. If you believe it's unconstitutional, then you should vote it down. But we think it is. And we hope that you will support it in the P&amp;E Committee as well as when it gets to the House floor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, members of the House, you know, I'm hearing something from the gentleman from Charlottesville that's reminiscent of the same type of thing that I've heard for about a decade from the Democrats in this body as they have attempted to stake out some sort of moral high ground on the issue of redistricting. I would suggest that the facade of that moral high ground completely disappeared yesterday with the introduction of their redistricting map and plan. To say that the current position taken by our Democratic colleagues is hypocritical is an understatement. And to say that it does not do what they represented that it does is absolutely factual. First, the hypocrisy, Mr. Speaker. Yesterday, we saw House Democrats introduce a map that goes to great lengths to protect four of their vulnerable members. It goes to great lengths to significantly weaken five incumbent Republicans. Contrary to what the gentleman said at the press conference yesterday about his own map, it paired four of our Republican incumbents into the same district. By the way, Mr. Speaker, I'm told that they -- their effort to reach down and grab one of our members and throw him into another district in the very stark way that they attempted to do it actually failed because they failed to account for the fact that Delegate McGuire had moved before they drew a little thumb that comes down into a district like that to try to grab his house. So they're going to have to work extra hard to grab him where he lives now in Goochlin County. But I have no doubt, based on the creativity that I saw in that map yesterday, that they can absolutely try to do that. Mr. Speaker, at the same time, this map kept a number of Democrat incumbents separated who live less than a mile apart from each other. And it gratuitously weakened to the tune of 10 or 12 points the district of the Chairman of Appropriations, Delegate Jones. This was clearly a very nakedly partisan move across the board. No question about that. And this move stands in sharp contrast to the recent words that we have heard even from the very leaders who put forth this plan yesterday. "I quote, 'A system in which incumbents can choose their voters and draw political opponents out of their districts is undemocratic,'" said Delegate Herring, House Democrat Caucus Chairman, in 2017. "I further quote, 'To say that this issue has been contentious is an understatement, but it is clear that some Republican incumbents want to draw districts in a way that benefit them and disadvantage their opponents,'" said Minority Leader David DeScano, also in 2017. Many of their colleagues are on the record as well, Mr. Speaker, with local activist groups or constituent groups where they've answered questionnaires or said things at forums. The very thing that the gentleman from Portsmouth alluded to, they are, many of them, on the record as advocating things that are much different than the plan that they've put forth today. I'm glad that there are activists here in the Capitol who support the efforts that they pledged that they themselves would support so they can see this plan for themselves and get to hear about it. And we're about to hear about it in some detail. So it's partisan. I understand that. But now the world knows that our Democrat colleagues are not above that sort of thing as they have portrayed themselves to be for the better part of the last decade. But the bigger problem, Mr. Speaker, is not the partisanship. It is that this bill does not fix the problems that the court ordered us to fix. It doesn't even fix the legal issues and makes many of them much worse. And in fact, it creates several new issues for no apparent reason at all except the partisanship to which I previously alluded. Mr. Speaker, we've identified 115 issues that the court itself put forth that required fixing. The House Democrat plan only fixes about a quarter of those. Of those 115 issues, this plan that we saw yesterday addresses 29 of those 115 issues. I heard the gentleman a minute ago say, in trying to claim that high ground again, that he takes court orders very seriously. He takes about a quarter of the court orders very seriously, I would suggest, based on the map and plan that we see before us today. Mr. Speaker, the long and short of it is the court's order was either defied or ignored. And that is not how you address the court's edict. There are a couple of very simple examples that are easily fixable that the court said to fix that are not fixed under the House Democrats' plan. And I just put forward a few of them. One was the Fan in Richmond. Everybody knows the historic Fan District in Richmond and its shape and its history and its restaurants and the like. And many of us even live in the Fan when we're here in session. And the court said, "Keep the Fan together," which apparently the Fan was split up into two legislative districts previously. The House Democrat plan completely ignores the court's admonishment to keep the Fan together. Delegate McQuinn had three precincts that the court specifically said those need to be back in her district. They identified those precincts by name. This plan does not even do that simple thing of fixing what the court told us to do with those three precincts. The court said, "Don't split up Dinwiddie County." And the plan continues to split up Dinwiddie County. It doesn't even address that. Again, the very simple things that the court ordered that the people who are making this map could look at and say, "The court told us not to do that," they went ahead and did them anyway. As to the racial components, Mr. Speaker, the court said in District 89 to rectify a split precinct in District 89 where white and black voters were separated. Under the Democrats' plan, that precinct remains untouched. There are so many other examples, Mr. Speaker. The court took issue with how narrow some districts are. So what did the Democrat plan do? Instead of addressing the narrowness issue, it made one district even more narrow to the point where you cannot even drive down a street to get from one part of the district to the other because no street exists in that narrow band that connects one part of the district to another in making it narrower still. Finally, Mr. Speaker, there are three districts that are affected that are not even included in this litigation and are not even adjacent to the districts affected by this litigation, which is well beyond what is required to comply with a court order. Mr. Speaker, we've obviously started looking at this plan. It is badly flawed. And the representations about it have not proven to be true in most respects. So we intend to look at it further. We intend to give additional scrutiny that the court would expect. And so that will start today as the Privileges and Elections Committee convenes to take up this plan and start to address some of the concerns that we have developed just in a few short hours. I'm certain that other concerns will come to light as we mine down into the data and the rationale behind the plan that already appears so flawed. For our own part, Mr. Speaker, we will continue to evaluate that plan. We will see if there is a politically viable path forward that also complies with and fixes what the court told us to fix. We would be eager to look for such a path. And I hope that we can find some common ground in that regard. But I must say, Mr. Speaker, that the plan put forward yesterday is an inauspicious start to that effort. Thank you.
Does any member have any further announcements, introductions, or motions? And if I could before -- yes.
I apologize.
Delegate Herring.
I can bite on for a point of --
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and members of the House, I do have to address the points that were raised. And especially when it comes to the issue of calling our side hypocritical. It is a fact, Mr. Speaker, since the Republicans have been in power, Democrats have introduced 87 redistricting reform bills in one form or another. So we would not have a partisan process. In comparison, Republicans introduced only three. We are dealing with the hand that we've been dealt. The court, on June 26, found these districts to be unconstitutional, 11 of them. 72 days had passed, 72, before the Republicans would do anything. So the court had to issue another order and said, "What are you going to do? What is your intent?" There's complete silence over on the other side of the aisle. Nothing. It took a court order to say to you all, "What are you going to do?" There were no hearings scheduled, nothing. So yes, we took it upon ourselves to start moving because something needed to be done. And perhaps, Mr. Speaker, the attitude over there is nicely coined in the quote that was provided to the press by one of the members over there. And I'm not going to call out the way that some of our members have been called out. But it was a member over there who said this. Again, what the citizens have to remember is that we've lived in the lines for eight years. There are only two more years until we have to do something anyway. That's the sentiment over there. So before you cast a stone over here, check yourself, please. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Does any member have any further announcements, introductions, or motions? Delegate from -- Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Levine.
Mr. Speaker, will the gentleman from Shenandoah rise for a question?
We're in the morning hour. There are no questions.
Oh, all right.
If I could, before we move on to the next section, this is a little bit unusual. I'd like to just say something quickly about Delegate Habib. He, from our side of the aisle, he very much admonished us not to praise him. And so I didn't want, after Delegate DeScano from Charlottesville said the very kind words, I want him to certainly know from our side of the aisle, he's one of the most talented delegates I've certainly ever dealt with. And certainly in committee, has done yeoman's work. Probably not a brighter guy that cares about the Commonwealth and fixes legislation. So I think certainly, from our side of the aisle, we're going to miss you. So thank you, Delegate Habib. If not -- okay, the clerk will call the calendar.
Mr. Speaker, calendar for today, Thursday, August 30, 2018, for the 2018 Special Session Two. There are no live categories on today's calendar. House Bill 7001 has been referred to the Committee on Privileges and Elections. However, Mr. Speaker, since this morning, a number of members, six in all, have introduced right at the speaker's table a number of commending resolutions. Commending -- yes. Mr. Speaker, the commending resolutions laid on the speaker's table are six. They are House Resolution 702, offered by Delegate Brewer; House Resolutions 703 and 704, offered by Delegate Keem; as well as House Resolution 705, excuse me; and then two more for House Resolution 706 and 707, offered by Delegate Thomas. These are commending resolutions that could be taken up as a block.
All those in favor of adopting the commending resolutions laid on the speaker's table, as read by the clerk, will signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. The resolutions are agreed to. I think the clerk has certain other resolutions. Any --
Mr. Speaker, that completes any business before the body.
Per House Rule 51, the House is returning the morning hours. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Speaker. A letter to the clerk, signed by the speaker. I've made the following committee assignments and changes effective today. Delegate Robert B. Bell III has been appointed to the Committee on Privileges and Elections, and he is replacing Delegate Habib. Delegate Bell of Almaro has been assigned to Privileges and Elections to replace Delegate Habib. In addition, another letter from the speaker to the clerk. I've made the following committee assignments and changes effective today. Delegate Gilbert has been appointed to the Committee on Privileges and Elections, and he will be replacing Delegate Jones, who is away. So Delegate Gilbert will be on Committee on Privileges and Elections in lieu of Delegate Jones. Finally, Mr. Speaker, looking ahead at the afternoon's schedule, the Committee on Privileges and Elections is going to meet one half hour after adjournment of the House down in the extension in House Room 3. P&amp;E will be meeting at House Room 3, half hour after adjournment, approximately 2:15, 2:20 this afternoon.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Mr. Speaker, I move that when the House adjourns today, it adjourn to reconvene pursuant to House Joint Resolution 7001.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert, moves that when the House adjourns today, adjourn to reconvene pursuant to HJR 7001. As many as favor that motion will say aye. All those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Mr. Speaker, I move the House do now adjourn.
As many as favor the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The House stands adjourned until reconvene pursuant to HJR 7001.